We will call the meeting to order. It is nine oh five. And we are here to do the plagues.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a special meeting, so we are here to talk about the Northern Plains proposal for 107th and 34th road concerns. And that is all we have on the agenda. Jeremy, if you want to come up, well, or we want... Jeremy, you can come up first and kind of what your... Did you make copies by any chance of any of them?
Yes, and I think that everyone has them. I do have some extras if we're missing a couple, but... So what we did, commissioners, we put together, excuse me, some alternatives for that intersection based on a, the 55 as designed and built, 65 mile an hour design speed and 75. And those associated costs, and that shows up on the spreadsheet. For the 65 mile an hour design speed, we're anticipating about $300,000, $320,000 roughly of additional cost. And then for the 75 mile an hour design speed, about $600,000 or $590,000 of additional cost. So that's kind of how the numbers come out. We also have a plan and profile sheet. And I realize you guys probably don't look at plan and profile sheets every day, but essentially if you're looking at the bottom half, these are your elevations. The green is how it's designed and built for the 55. The red would be the 65, and the blue is 75. And all it's really doing is flattening out that hill. 75 actually, or obviously lowers it much more than the 55 and 65. So those are kind of the three scenarios. We, I can go into the, how we came up with costs a little bit more in detail, but that's kind of a...
Sight distance on here, do you have a distance and time stuff, time, time?
No, I don't know what those numbers are. For the 55 to 65, just based on the numbers, it looks like it's about 150 feet additional, which is probably about two seconds is what my guess would be.
So between 55 and 65, you're saying two seconds?
I think so. I think it's around two to three seconds probably.
The difference in the other one is 325 feet of bridge and up to...
Right. Yeah, I think it's around four seconds, maybe even a little bit less than that.
What, do you remember, you told us at one point, the 495, the 55 mile an hour design, you had that number though, the sights. Do you remember?
Well, the sight distance is 495 feet. As far as the perception and reaction time, I think it was around six seconds.
Okay.
Six and a half seconds maybe.
Because it looks to me like, and I don't know if you're the engineer, but it looks to me like if we go from the grad, green, excuse me, the 495 sight distance to the red, 645, that's about a 22% increase in sight distance. Would that also equate to a 22% increase in reaction and stop time? Or is it those totally different calculations?
So the sight distance is really kind of the sum of two numbers. One is the perception and reaction time, which I think is like two and a half seconds. The other part of that equation is how long does it take for you to stop? It takes longer if you're traveling 75 versus 55, but that perception time is the same whether you're traveling 55 or 75. So it's really that breaking distance is where the difference comes from.
And I think this has been asked, I just, you know, with all of this, why did the road go up, why did the hill get built up so high on the top the way it is?
Sure. A few different things. One is we generally try to have you self-balanced for dirt work, so you're not borrowing a bunch of extra dirt and paying a royalty for that. So it's sort of self-balanced. That's kind of the main thing, I guess we've met the standard, having it self-balanced. And the profile shows the intersection itself at the section line came up about a foot and a half. You know, on each side, it came up a little bit more, but the intersection at the section line was really about a foot and a half higher than what it was.
So from Betlop's ditch on that side, as much as that ditch increased and/or, you know, got so much steeper on that side, that only came up a foot and a half?
Around a foot and a half. Further to the east, it came up a lot more. The reason it came up a lot more is because the existing conditions, it dropped off so quickly. If you were to be 50 feet east of the intersection, it probably came up six feet maybe. I don't know those numbers, but it definitely came up a lot more to the east than the intersection itself.
Well, I just think that, I mean, we're here, it's a special meeting, the two things we need to... And I mean, Al is not here. I think we kind of jumped the gun last meeting and made such a quick decision. I mean, we, safety and sight. I mean, those are the two most important things on this road. Al, do you have any comments on the phone?
I'm on your card. And one thing you gotta, we gotta remember is that we shoved that whole road to the east, I mean, excuse me, to the west into the hill. That's why there was only a little bit of fill off the section line, because the road was totally off the section line before, not totally, but quite a ways off and further to the east. So that's why on the Betlop side, the approach got raised up, you know, quite a bit more right at that approach. So...
Okay.
That's, that's kind of how, that's why, you know, like I said, the road shifted to the west, what it, they get the curb out of this, get it back on the true section line.
Okay.
You know, and as far, as far as other things, you know, in the design, I think, I personally believe that design is, is a 55 mile an hour speed limit design. At two meetings ago, we decided to go 45, and then some concerns were raised, but that speed, our stop sign's definitely got to go. That was, that was not, that's not a good idea. So there's a few things we've got to clean up on the meeting. I'm going to make the recommendation that the road stays to the elevation it is, leave the speed limit at 45 like we talked two meetings ago, and the stop sign needs to be thrown out. If you're going to flow traffic on route, that stop sign was not a good idea. And I'll be the first one to admit it or take the blame for it. Not a good idea. But I, I don't think we need to spend any more money on this road. I, I believe that the road will function just fine. And I think a big issue is, is that it's a change and people are not used to that road. It's a change of it, and I believe it's designed safe at 55. Now, we're going to put the speed limit at 45. So in true actuality, that road should be safer at 45 than it is the way it's designed right today. And like I said, I don't think we need to spend any more money. And we need just to move on and get this project closed up. So that's, that's my recommendation to the board is. And if you have some other questions, I'd be sure glad to ask or answer them.
Okay, thanks, Al. Does anybody have anything to say from the public? Thanks, Jeremy.
Morning.
Good morning.
State your name and...
Okay, my name is Cheryl Loman. And we live, we're Glenn and Cheryl Loman that live just on the north side of the top part of the hill. On the, yeah, going north. Anyway, now, did Al say that we're not, did he, what he meant was there won't be four stop signs?
He, that's still, that's still a motion, but he's recommending that we rescind that motion.
Really? Okay. So then the, the, the speed limit would be 55, right?
45, he recommended.
Okay, it's still the 45 up until like a thousand feet north of us then. Okay, but no...
That's what he recommends.
That's what his recommendation is.
That's what is recommended, but that hasn't been approved for sure. Okay.
Well, that was actually approved at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Or the, not the last, two meetings ago.
But he stopped to see, Al stopped to see us, and he said four, four stop signs. And, and, but that, of course, wasn't approved.
Yeah, it was approved.
The four stop signs are approved, but you're going to rescind it.
That's probably going to be the plan.
Okay, so, okay. All right. I know my husband and I were in favor of the four stop signs, because when the big trucks come by and they zoom on down the hill, you know, they're using their jake brakes, and it's a big ruckus, you know, a lot of noise. And it does slow them down, which would be, was our feeling that that...
Stop signs would slow them down, yes.
Will slow them down if there would be four, you know, the two.
And if I may interject, the next issue with the stop sign on top of the hill, there'll be jake brake thing in day and night.
With the stop signs, more jake brake activity?
Because they're coming up from your side, coming up the hill, yeah, going down.
Yeah, going north and south.
They'll probably won't see it, and they'll, they'll throw the jake brakes on. And one thing about if, if we're going to call this kind of like a bypass on eastern side of town, I think we need to keep the traffic flowing efficiently, and the stop sign is going to hinder that flow of traffic.
Okay. And then I had another...
I think after your approach has been built, I think you probably sit up quite a bit higher now than you were originally. You do come up to your approach.
Okay, that was my next question, our approach. You know, now we're sitting, you know, at such an angle, and we have to be extremely careful, you know? And what if there's ice and whatever on the road? So we were hoping that soon, you know, and Al did say that they are going to come in, and we're, there's an orange flag closer to us, and they're not even near that orange flag for putting that dirt in. And then, and then the scoria that would go over it, so that we would not be, you know, just sitting and looking up at the sky and wondering which, what's going to happen next.
Al, when can, when is that approach going to get fixed, or when can you estimate it to be completed?
Well, I tell you what, with the weather coming, I mean, we can, we can make them adjustments. I think they probably feel more comfortable, they have a flatter landing like the Betlop side has, and I think we could probably accommodate that.
Okay.
A little bit flatter, so it's not so, you know, if it's a total incline up to the shoulder of the road, of the, of the new road before they take off. And I think we could probably make that landing a little flatter there, so it's not so steep coming out of there.
Yeah, that would be great, and...
We can, we can make that adjustment pretty easy.
Oh, okay. And then, yeah, and then get, the scoria, would that wait until next spring? Or would you be able to get...
No, absolutely not. We, no matter what the weather does, we'll get, we'll get that road scoria back into your place.
Oh, okay, that sounds good. Okay, okay.
This, this little front we got coming through is kind of short-lived. And, but we'll, we'll make sure that that does happen.
Okay.
With what the weather does.
Okay, thank you. I guess that's about all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rhonda Keeson. I just want to thank you guys again for looking at this again. Certainly wish this would have been designed at the 75, knowing that it was going to be a bypass. People are going to go that fast. This looks like a much better plan than what happened. My concern still is our approach and our ditches. And somebody's going to roll. And yes, the stop signs was not a solution, because look how many deaths there's been at people running stop signs. That's what I, my biggest fear. And our neighbors, nobody wants to come talk, and it's very emotional for me. I want the ditches corrected. Thank you.
I'm Dave Bauer. Number one, thanks for all your coming out and looking at everything. Really appreciate that. And Jeremy, for all his hard work and rework and all that good stuff. I think for the majority of us, the vast majority of us, I didn't run across anybody in fact, that said the stop signs were a good idea. I think that kind of defeats the purpose of the paving and just kind of all of it. So I hope the stop signs go away more than anything else. The other thing too is that since you did approve in the first meeting that the speed limit be 45, and it's designed for 55, that, that's a 19% margin for safety, which I think is, is good. And it's going to be 45 north and south, correct? Is my understanding? Yeah, okay. So the, hopefully the jake brake thing will be minimized, because they'll be coming over the top of the hill theoretically at 45 versus 75 as a truck. So that's really all I got to say, and I think, appreciate all you guys working hard for it. Any questions for us?
So with this, Jeremy, with this eventually being a truck route, or, you know, they're saying this is going to be the truck route. So is a big truck carrying a load going to have time at the top of that hill to slow down enough to the Loman approach? In six seconds, is that truck going to have enough time?
So generally, obviously, a loaded truck is going to take longer time. However, generally trucks are higher, so you have more sight distance than a, than a car. For instance, so those kind of counteract themselves. So there's not any more concern whether it's a truck or a car. It's going to have about the same stopping sight distance.
If they're coming from the south going to north, it's going to be 45 all the way from Highway 10. So I mean, they're not going to be coming at 55 and all of a sudden have to slow down to 45 to come over the hill. They're going to be 45 all the way from the highway, 1,000 feet past. And it starts at 45, 1,000 feet past Lomans, right?
North of Lomans.
Yeah, so then, I mean...
Bernie, if I may interject, you're actually, the speed limit is 35 from Highway 10 to just the west, excuse me, the north side of the subdivision. And then it, then it goes back to 45, and then it will be 45 from that point until the traffic gets north of Lomans, 1,000 feet.
Well, I thought, I thought we had talked about changing it 45 right from the highway, but if it's 35, it's 35.
Well, that's probably what it was talked about, but I know when we had the gentleman that lived on top of the hill, that was signed for 35.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. I think people have probably gotten used to it. And now I would, I wouldn't, wouldn't recommend to kick it back up again.
Okay.
It's signed, and it's like I said, once you get north of the subdivision, then it'll be 45 till you get north of Lomans, approximately 1,000 feet down on the flat there, or it's off.
That's fine.
So up on top of the hill, are we 35 or 45? 45 on top of the hill?
45.
Okay, and where are we, 35?
By Geon's.
We're 35 from Highway 10 north, just, just north of the subdivision, the halfway subdivision, probably up to the top of that hill where the speed limit breaks.
Okay, thanks.
And you got to remember one thing too. If, if we're going to move another 100,000 yards of dirt, that's more dirt than we moved on the whole project just about in six and a half miles. And then the impact of the slope that we got to cut way back to the north, lower the phone line, I don't know how far north we'd, or west we'd have to go back to make that approach not so steep for Keesons and, and the rest of the people that live there to come down onto that road. It's going to be down so low. I think the guy's going to create a big snow trap in that, in that canyon that's actually going to have to be cut to get the road that low.
Yep.
Jeremy, you got any, any more thoughts on that? Won't that, won't the road off to the west be cut fairly deep down in, down into, because you got a hill on both sides, north and south? It's already kind of coming down, so now if you're going to lower that road a bunch, you're going to have to lower that road also.
Right, and Al, I don't think I sent you these, these exhibits, but the 65 lowers the intersection about 10 feet. The 75 mile an hour design speed lowers at about 18 feet. And you're right, and that, those numbers are sort of captured in our summary. We kind of estimated, because we don't have survey that far, but you're right, you're regrading 34th Street west probably a quarter mile. And whether this is, whether it's going to be...
That's not included in these prices.
What's that?
That's not included in the price that you...
It is. We kind of had to estimate a part of that, but Al's right. You're going to end up regrading 34th Street to the west probably a quarter mile. You know, I think we did about 500 feet with the design we had now. And if it gets lower 10 feet or 18 feet, you're well to the west. And then there's utility moves to make and more easements to obtain and some other things. But I think we've captured the estimated cost, but it is only an estimated cost. But it would definitely change the landscape of 34th Street to the west.
It probably impacts southwest water too on the west side.
Yeah, there, there's a crossing on top of the hill that would have to be lowered.
Then if you go 18 feet down, we're going to have trouble with snow blowing in there, aren't we?
That's what you were just saying, yeah. Mm-hmm. I, I would think so. Right.
I suppose...
I mean, in a, in a, in a perfect world, you know, last meeting, we made a motion, we made another motion. In a perfect world, what, what are you wanting to see out there? I mean, do you kind of know from everybody's point of view, Mr. Bauer?
As far as I know, we were good with the 45. It's not perfect by any means, but it's, it's workable, and it alleviates the idea that we're going to have to put stop signs out there. So I think the 45 is a decent compromise from the completion and depth of the project already. I mean, that's just being real, right?
Yeah.
So unless you want to go and spend a bunch of money, then go for it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think 45 is a, is a reasonable deal.
And no stop signs.
And no, zero stop signs, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
Two on the side.
Or, excuse me. In case we blow through them.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Well, I guess I would move that we rescind the motion on the...
Somebody else wants to...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Chad. With the, the design of it is and the way it's going to be now with the 45, can there be something done with the ditches so they're not so steep? It was talked about last time that the grades of the ditches are four to one in that. And I don't think anybody has a problem with the grade of them, it's just the overall depth. So if there are extra dirt, they're going to do some things, could they be filled in so they are not quite as deep as they are now? There is no forgiveness on any side of the intersection. It's a long ways down.
Al, Jeremy, do you have, did you hear that, Al?
Well, I, I think...
Yes, I mean, you want it flatter than a four to one? Or is that what you're, because I believe that's what they are right now. I think that one slope on the one side needs a little bit of work, Jeremy, over on the half side in that corner. We were actually going to flatten that out a little bit. So I just, you know, you drive around the countryside, a four to one is kind of a standard throughout the, throughout the country. And, and, I mean, I, I guess we could see if we could gather up a little dirt to make them a little bit flatter, Jeremy. I don't, I, I don't know, but I think for, for the most part, you know, a four to one is relatively, is relatively safe.
I think part of...
Any accident can happen at any speed. I mean, we can't control everything that's going to happen, but I, I, hopefully we've got enough things in place to make it as safe as we can.
I think the concern, Chad, was just mostly the depth of it.
Correct, not the slope, just the overall, how deep it is.
Don't know if anything can be done about the depth of it, but if we can't do the depth, we might have to look at changing that.
You mean the depth when you come up there? One, one of the kind of reasons is with the depth of that ditch, you can see a lot further to the south, and it can be four, at a four foot separation. So you can see a lot further to the south when you come up to that intersection, because the ditch is deeper on that side.
More so at the approaches.
So is it a matter of putting like, like a bench? So instead of, say, a 10-foot fill, and there's 10 feet of, vertically feet of, of slope, five, you mean, five feet of elevation, and then there's a bench? Is that what your expectation is, or...
From the top of the road down to the bottom of the ditch now, let's say, 12 feet.
Yep.
If from the top of the road, it could be 8 feet, 5 feet, or whatever that number is. Just to bring that elevations closer together, so it's not so far down.
Right.
And that's why I'm so emotional about it. I worry about people, we have young people coming out there. At all. And yes, that is a help to our site, but that shouldn't have been how it designed, to look through the ditches for your site, right? I mean, that's how I feel. It's low so that we can't see, but it's also a hazard. I mean, granted, I have been in the ditch three times out there in my 25 years of living, and I've had no damage. This time, I think I will.
Ultimately, the sight distance from the depth of the ditch to the north and the south is out there ways. If it was just more shallow at the intersections, that would help. Now, on the east side, it's going to be pretty tough, because that's a long ways down. Too much there.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I, I think I understand what you're, what you're asking for. Yeah, I mean, we could, we could build a, a bench in there, I guess.
But you're talking...
Generally on the east side is, is what you're thinking of.
Generally on the west side, the depth there, because there's nothing you could do. Bents would be great if you could put benches on the east side, too, absolutely.
Right.
It would help both.
Do you have enough dirt to waste to make benches, to get benches on those?
No, it's not. It's, I guess it wasn't designed to have benches. Doesn't mean we couldn't put benches in, but we would have to get, borrow from someplace, whether it was Lomans or, or Deckers Hill or something to, to put in benches. But, and I don't know what that cost would be, I guess. It, it wouldn't be nearly what these costs are, but it would be somewhat significant added cost to it.
Because I agree, when I was out there, you would roll with a pickup and horse trailer if you were, if it was icy or you were close to the side.
Okay.
You know, with the weight of it all and the way, I don't think the four to one is the issue. It's the issue that it just goes on forever and ever in that ditch, you know, it's just...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it is four to one. That's kind of what the standard is. I mean, kind of a broken record here, but...
Yep.
Yeah, we, we could put the benches in, little peace of mind. But we'd have to probably negotiate some easements and, and, and try to figure out where we can get the dirt. Because there's, the two obvious places is obviously Lomans Hill and Deckers Hill. There's really not a good place on the east side. Not that there's a place we couldn't, but I'm just trying to think aloud. It's going to be much more difficult on that east side than that west side. So I can't give you an answer, a cost or anything like that, but I think I understand the concerns. They're just not an easy way to do that.
And the additional speed, Al talking about people not, shouldn't have a driver's license. There are some CDL people that probably shouldn't. You know, we all know the shortage of drivers, and that is going to be an additional concern for people that don't have the experience driving. And it's a dangerous intersection. And I am a worrier and over thinker, and I'm thinking way out ahead. But I also know that there's been people killed in Stark County recently at stop signs and different things. I just don't want that to be at my intersection.
Yep. Al?
Yep. Yes. Are you asking for my opinion?
Yes.
Well, I, I mean, if, if everybody's going to feel safer, I mean, leave the top of the road the way it is. And Jeremy, I'm sure we can negotiate something to put a bench, put a four to one bench, and there'd be a landing if somebody were... if somebody would get off, and then we could just, uh, I think that this is, we probably could accommodate that somewhere along the line.
Okay.
Depending, like, you know, if that's what the board wants to do, I guess we'll just have to figure it out and, and pile some dirt, pay some loyalty, it can be done.
Just how far down are you gonna go with it, then? You know, are you gonna go down four feet or five feet, or?
Well, I'm thinking maybe like mid, mid-slope, perhaps.
That's what I was thinking, too, yeah.
Six foot or a ten-foot wide bench, I guess. Expectation, you know, ten-foot bench is wide enough? I mean, I don't know who I should be getting traction from here, but-
I was more so talking about on the west side, you know, turning both ways. Idea, I believe that would help, but that's kind of the decision of you guys and the landowners on that side that I've been. That loss coming out of there. Never did ask them question, or question them about that, what they would like there. Our side, the overall depth of things. On the east side, I guess. Me, it's better, it's safer if it's a bench. On the east side as well, but I don't have any specific-
Well, you know, I, I think we would have to address that on a cost factor as well. Safety's critical, I agree. Um, and I'm just thinking on the routes I drive with our trucks and all this kind of stuff, and I, I think it's impossible to spend our way into absolute safety. So we're, we're here at this point. What I'd like to see us do today is move the project forward the way we are, with one of the three options. I'm in favor of keeping it as designed. We have a recommendation from the engineer and the road department to do that, and then let's explore your issue with the, with the safety, the ledges, the banks.
Yeah, that's three different steps.
And see what that would cost, and, um, over time. Because we want safety, but, you know, um, it's, it's, you know, it's just, it's tough, because-
That would be the cheapest alternate, is trying for the bench or leave the road top the way it is, because there's so many different things involved. We've got, we've got, uh, water lines, we've got, uh, fiber optic cables, we've already got the pit run gravel down, the, the top of the road is firm and stable. Um, I, I think that Neil's got a good idea there, come up with just, let's leave the road top the way it is, and, and, and research our options to get a bench. I'm sure we can get a bench in there, you know, from, get some borrow from somewhere, and get, make that, get that, so everybody feels comfortable at the end of the day that we've tried our best to make it as safe as we can. That's, that's what everything we do is about safety, so I, I, I think to have the community feeling unsafe, and, and if that's, if that's what it takes to put a bench in there, I think, Jeremy, we'll just make it happen.
On the corners and the, the radius on there, what are they now? The radiuses on the?
Um, they might be a four to one. Um, when they finish, it'll be a six to one, uh, in the intersection vicinity.
Are you talking distance or drop?
I'm talking the distance, the, the radius actually, the curve to curve, so if it's, they're worried about dropping off if you made them wider, the radius wider.
Uh, it's, it's variable. I mean, there's some places, it's, um, probably fifteen feet. Um, other areas, it's, you know, four.
I, I, I think, I think you're missing his question. His question is, if you have, if you have a long tractor trailer, and you take that corner shorter than you should.
Sure.
What, what's that distance? If you made the, the approach wider, would that assist for some of the concerns?
The cur, the corner would be wider, or?
Like the radius of the curve?
Yeah, the radius, the curve, I wanted to make, to make it, you know, so it would be out first, so they weren't, when they're taking the corner, they wouldn't be dropping off.
Yeah, so, so the radius, I believe it's about forty-five foot radius.
Okay.
That's, and I'm probably gonna confuse people, but that's a forty-five foot to the, to the graded. Once it gets paved, it's gonna be around fifty to fifty-two, because the pavement would get sucked in, so you'd get a little more area with your, um, pavement.
How does that compare to like Highway twenty-two for nor, you know, main intersection, where the radius is in there? They're probably all the same, aren't they, or?
Um, well, not everyone's gonna like it, but the standard is forty-five, and that's what we did. Um, what is, what it is on, uh, like Highway twenty-two, some of those are less, but they're generally at forty-five or, or less.
Would that help? Would that help if they made that, the flat on the west side wider? Does that help?
Possibly. Um, it, it, it never hurts to have it wider, there's no question about that.
You're, you're talking, Neil, getting the, getting like the end slopes on the radius to be flatter than they are correct, so in case somebody does come around.
Well, I'm just saying, if you ran a tape measure from north to-
You know, because we, we've been kinda holding off on this hill for quite some time, and, and there's no tops or nothing on there, so they may not even be the true, you know, what they're supposed to be either.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, someone with a, with the address, the horse trailer or the semi with a pup trailer, it, you know, obviously, the, the curvature takes a, a flatter curve, and so if you have a trailer, to me, the least expensive resolution to that is to the, make the west side approach significantly wider, so that, uh, you have more forgiveness in that regard. But I, you know, it's also gotta address the concerns, and to me, that, that seems like a reasonable deal.
Yeah, I mean, those radiuses could be expanded to a seventy-five foot radius, but that's still very minimal compared to, I think what they want is, is each side to have a bench or something on it.
In the ditch, yes.
Yes.
Yes, I get that.
Yep.
Turning in is gonna be, you know, when we first saw how wide it was, we thought, oh, there's turning lanes, amen, but, yeah. It was very misleading from the beginning.
That was my concern about making the radius wider, that you wouldn't really need turn lanes, but you'd have more area to, you know, make the corner, I guess, is what I was trying to get at, yeah.
Sure. So let me just throw out a number, not that it, numbers mean everything, but let's just say it, in rough numbers, it costs between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars to, to put a, to put a bench and make a bigger radius, is that, is that a reasonable cost? I mean, I don't wanna put you guys on the spot, but we're trying to wrap this thing up fairly soon here, if possible. Is there any number in mind that's, we can run with? You know, if we could make something work, or is that something we wanna design and come back with a number, and probably do it next year? Because we're, you know, it's snowing right now, obviously, in this, by the end of the week, it's gonna have six inches of snow on it, then our, our season's kind of over.
That would be my preference. Let's, let's get the radius on the west side fixed. That's, that's doable, because I don't think that's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right, yes.
But I think in the interest of the overall, and this is not a cost share project either, we're doing, the county's doing this a hundred percent. Typically, a lot of times, we have an eighty, twenty cost share, so we're only twenty percent, so if it is a hundred thousand dollar uptick, it costs us twenty. So, um, I, I'm looking at it from the point that we have the recommendations. We can, we've compromised on, on the speed and those kind of things, and hopefully, we can compromise on the radius, and if it's realistic, I'm willing to compromise on the bench. But at this point, you're looking to move forward, and so if we gotta get rid of the stop signs, I'm in favor of that, and, and stay with the fifty-five design, I'm good with that. Uh, and then let's deal with the, um, benches, or whatever you call them, next, when we have firm numbers. I, I just, I can't, I have a tough time spending other people's money when I don't have the firm numbers, so.
Okay.
Okay, so it is November seventh, and we will discuss benches with numbers next spring.
Or during the winter, when-
Or during the winter. Just so it's not forgotten, and we, okay. Sure. I will let Karen know to notify when that gets on the agenda.
That's all we want, is the partnership, and-
Sure.
The feeling that, you know, the last commission meeting, when we saw it online, we were all flabbergasted, and I started making calls, and I was like, and of course, nobody wants to come in to speak, but, um, everybody was shocked how that turned out, and it was outpaced. I had messages from Dave, and I talked to a party that was here, and they told me about the four-way, and nobody could believe it. And then, like I said, all I could do was spiral, and that wasn't safe at all. Yes, the Lomans, you know, it would help them, but I watched people blow through the thirty-fifth stop sign. They're gonna blow through that one, too.
Yep, I agree.
So, um, if, if that's a motion or direction, we'll come up with a cost for these, for these benches. I'll call them benches, I, I think that's gonna accommodate what you guys are generally looking for, a, a bench to, so you're not dropping the entire twelve feet or fifteen feet, it's, it's a mid, midway bench. We'll come up with those numbers, probably at the December meeting, unless you guys wanna have another special meeting, but-
No.
Um, as long as the, the commission has the expectation that the project probably won't be built this year.
Okay.
Okay?
But we, we do need to formalize-
Yeah, do it one step at a time.
Re, retract, yeah, and retract the stop signs.
Yes.
That would be number one, so I think Bernie wants to-
If I, if I might interject, what if, what if the weather turns around and we can get some of this stuff done? It'd be the best interest if we could get some of this stuff done this fall. Maybe, maybe it's unheard of, and, and I haven't seen any forecast out much more than a week or so, but unless we're, unless we're gonna call it wintered in, maybe that, I, I don't know.
Would it be okay on?
Like to keep work?
Sorry, Al.
Keep working on the project, get the weather permit, the weather don't permit, then, uh, we'll just have to put in winter suspension.
So if there is some time with, you know, winter in this, does, is there a main contact personnel could call? So he doesn't have to call anybody or everybody? Is that okay? Just so there's communication?
I think we could, I think we could handle this project here without just getting the benches put in, and we've got, we've got the money to do it, I think we just make the plan, let's put the benches in and put them in.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's what our, our, our people want, let's put them in.
Okay.
It's not like we can't afford to do it. Make the motion, put the benches in when the weather permits, let's move on, and everybody will be happy, including myself. I've spent a lot of hours up there, I, I, I feel for the people, they drive it every day, I don't. Let's make a motion, let's put the benches in, get the road done, move on. Let's stop waiting, postponing, this or that. We have the money, so let's do it, let's get it done, let's make the motion, fix the road the way that people want it, we'll get the dirt from somewhere.
Okay, sounds good, okay, Bernie, go ahead with your first one.
Make a motion to rescind, I made the motion to put in the four-way stop sign, I'll make a motion to rescind that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to rescind the stop signs from being put up, um, traveling north and south? Roll call vote, Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Now we need a motion for the benches.
You wanna make a motion that, um, we move forward to putting in benches?
I think we need to get some kind of a cost estimate, though, I, 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 I mean-
Do you want me to put a limit on it? If it's over a certain limit, then go, then come back to us.
Be fine with that, and, uh, you know.
Um, Al, what would be a limit that, so we can just put the benches in, and we wouldn't have to bring this back to another meeting? What would be your limit?
I, I couldn't imagine, we couldn't put the benches in for, I don't know how much dirt we can really need to move there, but it'll make it like seventy-five thousand, I would think we should be able to put them in for that.
Okay.
And this is just the ones on the west side? Or are we gonna look at some on the east side, too? I think the east side's a little more difficult, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but in, in my opinion, I think the east side is, is, uh, hate to say it, less safe than the west side, just because it's, it's a longer drop-off. So I, I think that my intention was both sides, east and west side, and north and south of the intersection, but-
Okay, and off the top of your head, you said, what else, a seventy-five?
I, I was gonna guess fifty to a hundred thousand dollars.
I'd say let's put a limit at a hundred thousand and go move forward.
Okay. Okay.
Make that a motion, then.
Go ahead.
Tell him to do it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and take care of the, you know, the, the ditch depth on there with these benches that we're talking about, and we, that if it's over a hundred thousand dollars, that they come back to the commissioner for approval, but go ahead, up to a hundred thousand dollar motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been a, a motion and a second that we, um, put benches in for the safety of one hundred and seventh. I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Is there anything else on one oh seventh?
No, thank the people for coming in, voicing their opinions. Not, we don't, we don't want, we don't want to know our taxpayers, so-
No, we don't.
Thank you for your patience, and we'll get it fixed.
Okay, um, Al, Mrs. Loman is saying one more word. Can you come up?
Sure.
I was wondering if when people come from the north and are going south, and then, um, Kison and Marmon's driveway, I don't know at what point they can see it, could there be a sign that would say merging, or, you know, that there, there's a driveway over here, and they probably can't see it? Is, is that correct?
And they talked about putting-